Good afternoon, everyone, colleagues, Dr. Savine, staff. We're here this afternoon, Board of Education, meeting in work session. And we have one item on our agenda for this work session. And that is a discussion of the superintendent's fiscal year 2024 recommended budget. So we have Dr. Savine, our superintendent, Mr. Prue, our chief operating officer, and Mr. Brandenburg, our executive director of finance, along with Eric Sisler, our budget and finance manager here, for the presentation. So, Dr. Savine, I'll turn things over to you.
Well, thank you, President Williams, members of the board. It's been nearly over a month since I presented my draft budget in work session on January the 3rd. As I mentioned on that afternoon, I'll revisit today, the four priorities of the draft budget. That's before you is, number one, combating inflation. Second item is a focus on safety and security and mental health. Certainly, there's a focus on salaries and compensation to attract and retain our employees. And the last priority pertains to meeting the requirements of the blueprint. While in this budget, you have the most critical needs of the school district, but not all the needs. And we talked about some of the items that did not make it in this proposed budget. This is before you at a time period that I think it's worth mentioning, that we have historic high revenues at the local and state levels. Also, in today's work session, I want to reference, we have additional good news. We'll talk here shortly about a recommended budget adjustment regarding the resource pool, an additional $113,000 from the state. Before I go any further, I want to take a moment just to thank Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandenburg, and Mr. Sisler for all their work this fall in building and assisting with this budget. This time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Prue for a couple additional highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Savine, and I think, thank you, board members, for the opportunity this afternoon. Again, today's discussion is the superintendent's recommended FY24 budget. Really, there are only a few minimal changes from when we met a month ago. I'll walk you through those very quickly. We can open the floor then to questions. And reverting back if we need to, we do have the slide deck loaded from a month ago, so if we need to revert back to any of that information, we will definitely go through that. Really, a quick overview of what we're going to really talk about today are really only two adjustments, an adjustment to state revenue and an adjustment to compensation and benefits. Dr. Savine just mentioned his budget priorities. I think it's worth pausing here for a moment to really reflect on those budget priorities and for folks that are viewing from home that can actually see those if they did not catch it as Dr. Savine was speaking. But really, you know, nothing has changed. In a month's time, nothing really has drawn attention to raising or lowering any other particular priority as it relates to this budget. So, as we look at adjusted state revenue, of course, Governor Moore released his budget just about two weeks ago. We were pretty darned close on our projections. We're actually expecting, based on the anticipated aid that we received from MSD, resulting from Governor Moore's budget, is an additional $113,000, which raises our state aid to $22.1 million. So I think, you know, kudos to the team, I think, to be off by $113,000 and $22 million. I think Eric did a fine job of putting that forward. But as we suspected and as we talked about at the previous meeting, it wasn't all in the buckets we expected or in the amounts we expected in each bucket. So, we did see some variations within each of the shares. Notably, compensatory education was up significantly, and pre-K funding was down significantly, I think, in two areas that we could think of. But all in all, the big number is up $113,000. Dr. Savine, after consulting with senior staff and with the finance team, has made the decision to add that $113,000 to our area of compensation and benefits, which raises that page and that slide to $16.72 million. And, of course, that's Section 2E of your consolidated summary. And with that, we can take questions. I think it's a short overview, and we're happy to handle any questions or comments that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Yes, Mr. Stauffer?
A few weeks ago, I visited Fountaindale Elementary. And one day, I saw first grade class. Second day I was there, I saw two kindergarten classes. And the two kindergarten classes, all the students weren't there, but each teacher had 29 students on roll. They weren't all present that day. And it was interesting to me that neither teacher, and it's not a Title I school, neither teacher though had a parapro in there to assist. It was also oppression that, I was told, that the intervention teacher had been pulled to start the following Tuesday to take a third kindergarten class so that the class size would decrease. So I don't know if it's possible in this budget to, you know, a few years ago, we made a big pledge to, with the superintendent, Dr. Michael at that time, to expand pre-K. And staff and the superintendent did a great job with that. I don't know that we can decrease, and you guys on staff know more than I do about this. I don't know what the research shows about smaller class sizes for pre-K through second grade. But it would seem to me that if we can't decrease the class size, is it possible in this budget to have an aide, a parapro, who is trained to teach reading and so forth in the pre-K kindergarten, first and second grade classes, even though, like Fountaindale, it's not a Title I school? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stauffer. And I would support instructional assistants or paraprofessionals in our kindergarten classrooms and prefer it also in our first grade classrooms to accelerate more students reading before, on time, before second grade level. Right now, as you mentioned, all of our Title I schools have instructional assistants and parapros in our kindergarten classrooms and our preschool programs, four-year-olds, that is a requirement. It certainly is a best practice. I know, as we've briefed you on the blueprint, recognize that into FY24 and '26, we will be receiving more dollars that would allow us to perhaps do a district-wide initiative to make sure that all of our kindergarten classrooms have instructional assistance. And I'll add the caveat that it's important that we train our instructional assistants in the science of reading so they can assist instructionally with the reading process. That's exactly what we've done in our Title I schools, and we're seeing favorable results. So I would be in support of that. I'll also add that next year, through grant funds, we will be adding additional reading tutors and apprentices. I believe we have scheduled about 70 that will be in our schools. So this is a point of focus, certainly in FY24 budget. You know, as I mentioned, proposed to address the most critical needs, but not everything. And certainly, this board could, in my opinion, consider, you know, the instructional assistance. Certainly, it's consistent with our focus on supporting reading at our earliest levels.
Possible under this budget to do that? Is there money that can be found?
You have, actually, two choices. We could, the board could make adjustments with the existing funds as proposed, or you could consider adding on to this budget. I would suggest looking at the state dollars that will be coming our way and certainly requiring some local dollars too, that perhaps a reasonable number of assistance to be used beyond Title I, which would allow us to increase the number of instructional assistance kindergarten next year with the goal of FY25, maybe getting all of our kindergarten classes to that point. So that's just something I offer for your consideration.
It would take time to do it. I just wondered if the money's there to even start the initiative this year, you know?
Thank you. Mr. Prue?
I think two other thoughts. Board members may recall that this current year's budget, FY23, did not encompass any contingency teachers. This was a budget that was fairly tight, and we didn't budget for contingency teachers. There are three in the FY24 budget. So, as you have growing class sizes and locations, you could utilize your contingency teachers to fill that void and to bring your class sizes down. That's typically how Dr. Palmer and Dr. Webster will look at enrollments specifically in the month of August. But sometimes, enrollments continue to climb throughout the year, which I think might be the case. You know, I'm not an expert on the situation at Fountaindale, but I think that might be the case. From a facilities perspective and just simply not even a monetary perspective, you've got a situation where you have one of our smaller schools, and they are more susceptible to fluctuations in enrollment. And it is harder to maintain a limited class size in our schools that only have one and two round, where if you all of a sudden get an influx and every child that's moving into that district ends up in the same grade level, you have high class sizes. And that is much harder to manage on the long term as we look at maintaining our small schools. So it takes much more manpower to do so. You also have the factor of the blueprint, where 75% of available funding, of course, has to follow the student. I know we've talked about that. Early indications are right now that Fountaindale's enrollment and where they are programmatically with the demographics of their students is right on that 75%. So if we're looking at adding staff, that funding has to come from somewhere else. So it either comes from reducing the 25% share that can be used anywhere system-wide, or potentially, it's an additional lift asked of local government beyond the blueprint funding formula.
Any other questions?
I have a question. First, specific to Fountaindale, I visited there probably more recently than you stand, and you had made some changes, I think, at Fountaindale to decrease class size. I think you were able to move a position, intervention specialist, right?
Intervention teacher moved into a regular classroom.
Tuesday, after I was there.
Got it. Yeah, so we did see some movement there, and I was lucky enough to be there when she'd already...
To me, that's like Robin Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah.
I mean, because I was told she sees 50 students a day. And I said, "Well, where's the slack being taken up?" And I was told by the principal, Mrs. Berger, that it was being taken up by special ed and classroom teachers helping out and this type of thing. So I don't know if we gained anything. Certainly, kindergarten did, but again, that was just my impression, being there for three hours and so forth.
I know the teacher was very relieved to go from 29 down to, I think, about 20 in her class, which was good. I want to dive into pre-K a little bit. So Jeff, is our funding from the state not where we want it to be because of we're universal and the rest of the state is not?
I think my understanding, and I'll defer to the team, I think my understanding of, you know, with the ratios is it sometimes becomes a function of how you relate to the rest of the state. And in this case, it could also be a function of poverty level. I don't know if Dave and Eric have a little bit more insight.
...on the eligible kids this year, right?
Right. Well, we were funded on the eligible kids, but the more cost share went to the local government. So you've got an amount per capita, and that amount is shared equally between the state and the local government. But there's fluctuations in the cost share based on a number of factors. Each funding bucket is slightly different. So the comp ed bucket is different from the pre-K, is different from the foundation. Pre-K was funded very heavily, as I recall, I want to say north of 80% last year, and, Eric, 60-some percent this year?
Basically, everything we expected in pre-K, it's within $100,000. It just switched to being locally funded. So in the formula, the wealth of the county must be, it grew in comparison to the rest of the state.
So the full funding is there?
Okay, got it.
The challenge is that until MOE at the county level still exceeds the blueprint formula. So until that happens, any shift that puts more funding on the local level will hamper and sort of tamp down the funding available to Washington County Public Schools within the blueprint formula, because MOE still exceeds the blueprint formula.
But the state still funds us based on the idea that some parents around the state would be required to pay, where we don't require payment?
Correct.
We had 742 eligible for funding this year.
742 eligible for funding?
Which is students 300% of the poverty level or less, based on their household income.
Okay. I guess I was just, I was wondering if there's a political ask to be made, sort of an appeal, because we were courageous and went for universal pre-K, that now it's hampering our efforts to provide universal pre-K because they're implemented across the state. And I would ask, is our delegation aware of this, of how pre-K is funded? Do we know? Because that might be something to bring up with.
I couldn't say for sure how fluent they are
Okay.
and how the blueprint is funded and how that works for each of the different pillars and...
That, to me, just seems like a logical ask to say, "Washington County, we've been first in a lot of things. Right now, we're first in apprentice. We got our, we were way ahead of the game when it came to security, and we benefited from that." And I think here, we've been ahead of the game when it comes to how we handle behavior issues early on by having universal pre-K. So I almost wonder if that's like an ask to the funders
Right.
that they give us special funds to continue to provide universal pre-K without going the state model of requiring certain parents to pay, because I know we don't want to do that.
Right. I suppose it's an ask, and it will become more difficult as we get into the formula to continue to provide, you know, that full universal pre-K. However, the funding per student on pre-K expands exponentially as we head out closer to 2030. It almost doubles. So, you know, in a sense, it'll be a little bit easier to accommodate students that don't meet the criteria to have a partial funding model paid for by the state. I believe we're two years away.
Six.
FY26 will pick up Tier 2 students, which, if members heard me correctly, are 300% to 600% of the poverty level.
Okay, so they're phasing it in.
So they're phasing it in over time, that'll be the Tier 2. And then anything over 600, in theory, the parent should pay to be in the public pre-K. You know, based on the median income in Washington County, you know, the vast majority of our students will likely be in a model that's partially funded by the state or fully funded by the state, based on that income guideline.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I'm looking at the inflationary increases. $1.88 million, which we have no control over. I'm looking at the blueprint costs, $6.97 million. Again, this is something we have no control over. But what's of true importance to me would be pages 19 and 20, where we're looking at supporting the needs of our students. And that's $3.42 million. I'm in favor of contingency teachers. I think we've found out from past experience that when we don't put them in the budget, we end up needing them, and we regret not having put them in the budget. So I'm certainly in favor of those contingency teachers. I don't see one position listed there as a position identified as supporting the needs of students that isn't warranted, necessary. And that's true of coordinating the needs of students. I think those positions are important. One of the documents that we were provided, we have 22 English-language teacher positions, I believe, at a cost of $1,430,000. Is the bulk of that money or all of that money coming from the state to cover those positions? So out of that bucket that has been identified for that target group? So this is not coming as part of, well, not that you can separate things from the local ask, but this is money that's coming to us from the state, targeted for this population to address these needs. Do I have that right?
Mostly. How about that?
Mostly.
You may recall back in June during one of the board member sessions or one of the business meeting sessions, Dr. Will and I talked about the blueprint, and specifically, we talked a little bit about each of the buckets, each of the pillars, and how the funding was going to work moving forward. And that's where I think when we probably really talked more for the first time about 75% of the funding following the student. In the old model, the funding we received from the state, whether it was comp ed, EL, special ed, foundation, was really deemed unrestricted. So the money was used wherever it was needed in the budget. Now, under the blueprint formula, all of those needs, of course, have to follow the student. And I feel like every time I say that, I sound like a broken record. In this case, we could go back to FY23 and look at it and say, "We generally didn't spend 75% of our EL funding following the students." So while we have a significant increase in the EL students, about a 30% increase from FY23's budget funding to FY24's budget funding, we also have to increase our EL spend to make sure that we're meeting the 75% benchmark. So when you're looking, and this is in the summary document, it is Section 2D, and we really begin with line seven, line eight, and line nine. Line seven is an EL lead teacher. Line eight, as you referenced, Mrs. Williams, the $1.43 million for 22 EL teaching positions. And line nine, which is an EL multi-lingual family liaison parap position at the Welcome Center. These are positions that meet the needs of our EL population, while also ensuring that WCPS is meeting the 75% requirement of EL spend following the needs of students. Is that helpful?
Yes, very. Thank you. And you mentioned a 30% increase, and I think in one of our updates, we had an exact number of EL students. And my question is, are they pretty much spread across the different, or are their pockets at the secondary level as opposed to the elementary level? Where are we seeing the distribution? What does the distribution look like?
Throughout, clearly throughout the district. I don't think there's a school at this time that doesn't have at least one EL student. Typically, we see concentrations clearly in and around the city core is where I think we see the vast majority of our EL students, but we do see them throughout the county in various locations. And I think, you know, I've got the educators behind me, and they'll tell me or throw something at me if I speak incorrectly. But I think it would be best practice to make sure that our EL students stay in the home attendance zone where they reside and provide services to them where they reside as opposed to trying to collapse them into programs and move them out of their home neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Any other questions, colleagues?
Yeah, so kind of piggyback off of Mr. Stauffer. I too, you know, got to go visit Fountaindale as well as Pangborn. And, you know, it's obvious when, you know, there's such high class numbers and such a young population. And I know that's not ideal for anyone, and I know no one wants that, but unfortunately, sometimes you have to have. And I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Will, I think it was Pangborn Elementary, where the turnover was in the hundreds over the course of just a month in the school year. You know, so it's next to impossible to appropriately plan for that for a whole school year when it changes like that over the course of even just a month. But with that being said, I'm confident that Dr. Savine and his team is working with the local sheriff's office and the city police chief to see what we can do about school safety. But I do also think that the biggest impact that we can have on school safety is by having more classroom personnel available, preferably teachers, to reduce those class sizes. But, you know, we also have to have a place to put the teachers, and when you have a place like South High busting at the seams, where do you put another teacher? So I get that as well. If we did go and add maybe a parapro or whatever it may be, seemingly, you would almost have to do that to every single school, especially if we're looking at it from the elementary standpoint. What would we have to cut in order to be able to make that happen? Because while we want to add more staff, you know, to lighten that workload, people cost a lot of money, and, you know, we would have to go and make cuts. So where would we be able to do that to make that happen?
You know, I would...
And I know that you weren't playing on that question, so I don't necessarily expect an exact answer right now, but, you know, what would be your thoughts?
I would advocate at this point, based on the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, this is not all the needs. These are the most critical needs. It gives me heartburn talking about or cutting any of those critical needs. I would propose, as we're talking about a paraprofessional position, it's, you know, with proper training, it's not at the cost of a teaching position. Also, you don't have the challenge of creating additional space. If it is the desire of this board in this budget to perhaps do a phase in, what I would suggest is maybe five additional paraprofessionals designated for kindergarten. We already have that in our Title I schools. Our instructional staff could look at those schools that are next on the list. And then with the next budget cycle, with the graduated process of more funds coming from the state, the goal could be in another year or perhaps two. But I think perhaps in the next budget cycle, it's a realistic goal to have kindergarten instructional aids in all of our kindergarten classes. So that would give you an option where you wouldn't necessarily need to cut from a critical needs-based budget. I know it's one of the things that we talked as in senior leadership. I'll yield to Mr. Prue or others that may want to add a perspective there.
I think the phase in may be a good approach, and maybe, Mr. Evans, what might be helpful is, of course, on the agenda tonight is the board basically to adopt this budget as your draft. At that point, the budget becomes the board's. But staff could present to you at a future meeting an option, so we could take a look at maybe, who are our next schools that would be, let's say, for lack of a better term, Title I-worthy, you know, from a farm perspective, a free and reduced meals perspective, which schools would come up next? who, which schools would come up next? How many paraprofessionals would it take to accommodate one, two, three schools? And then we could put a price tag to it. And then the board would have something concrete that they could look at and make a decision on.
Just for an example, for a parapro, we budgeted around forty-three or forty-four thousand. So if we're looking at five, you're around two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, just for a ballpark number.
Can I ask a question? Do we pay our Title I school parapros with Title I funding?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. But if it's a non-Title I school?
It would be general fund.
A general fund.
I guess my question is, even if we had a boatload of money sail in, where are the paraprofessionals going to come from?
That's probably the largest question is, you know, we're currently on any given day, sitting with forty-five or fifty vacant paraprofessional positions. So I'm not sure the workforce is there currently to fill those positions. We've also added a lot. You know, a lot of our tutors are, you know, that we've added math and reading tutors are paraprofessional positions. So, you know, we may have saturated the community in terms of that position.
Now, just, I'll mention for the board's benefit, certainly from a curriculum instruction standpoint, our focus is on, in particular, pre-K through second grade and reading. I mentioned, I believe it's the Maryland Leads Grant, where we have additional funding, where we are training apprentices. And we're looking to more than double those reading apprentices that are already in our highest need schools. And that gives us a chance to expand. I'll invite Dr. Willow, just for the benefit of the board, to speak to that because that was a part of our discussion just this week.
Yeah, these, I mean, all of the conversation that you're having today as a board are internal conversations that we continue to have. We do have to look at Title I and make sure that, Title I is supposed to provide additional supports for our schools that have free and reduced meals above seventy-five percent. And so we use those grant funds in particular to show that we're going above to meet the needs of students. And I'm not going to get into comparability reports and other factors today because that might be part of our presentation. But to then take general funds and potentially put a kindergarten paraprofessional in every school that is not Title I would also potentially cause us some issues with how we use our Title I funds. So again, it's not that those issues can't be resolved. But as some of you know that have experience in Title I settings, that it would be a challenge. What we can continue to do, though, is take advantage of what we've accomplished with Maryland Leads. So we originally wrote the Maryland Leads Grant for fifty tutors a year. This year, due to not getting Maryland Leads late into last spring, we weren't able to advertise it as much as we would have liked to. We still picked up thirty-two tutors. But because we budgeted for fifty, that gives us eighteen more to potentially use on top of fifty next year. So we would hope to go from thirty-two to sixty-eight just using the Leads Grant. The tutors are trained in the science of reading. For the most part, they've done an excellent job. As high school students, we need to remember they are high school students. But we're very proud of their accomplishments. And I am going to take just a moment to brag. Today at North High, one of our tutors is currently applying to be a WCPS paraprofessional. So we were helping answer questions through that application. So I'm excited that some of them, and she is going to do that full-time for us next year while taking evening classes to become a teacher. And so it is, I think, paying off. And the fact that we have more of those, I hope that we'll be able to share some more success stories, so.
Yeah, and I'll just add, so when we think about the Maryland, with the phase-in approach, with the Maryland Leads Grant, we will benefit at least one more year with hopefully seventy students infused in our early childhood classes focusing on reading. So we do have that plan in place. That gives this board an opportunity to plan in the next budget cycle, perhaps an initiative with parapros supporting all of our kindergarten classrooms. Now, recognize why I say all. Some of our smaller schools, say, I'll just use Pleasant Valley as an example, because of the size, it may be that in some cases, we share instructional aids. It may not warrant a one-for-one. But our curriculum instruction team can analyze that. But I think when you look at best practice research, the more support, in particular with reading, with our youngest learners, there's value in having trained paraprofessionals supporting quality instruction with our teachers. And we do not need additional space. The challenge is making sure with the workforce, we have the workforce to support it. But at least for another year, through the Maryland Leads Grant and the reading tutor apprentices, we have additional support in that area coming.
Mr. Evans, I thank you for bringing the discussion around to that because I too feel that we need to be doing more to reduce class size, especially at the primary level. You know, it makes little sense to me to put so much effort into pre-K only to move those students who are accustomed to being in a class of twenty or so with a paraprofessional and a teacher, and then moved into a class that's, you know, so much larger in some instances. And I think that's, you know, that foundation is critical. We have so much at the other end of the spectrum for our kids. But if we don't get them to a place where they can take full advantage of what we have for them at that end, you know, we've not done our job. So, no, it kind of makes me heartsick to be faced with something like school security and safety and reducing class size in a way that we know will benefit our kids. So when I look at, and believe me, I'm all in favor of safe schools and secure schools. But I'm wondering if nineteen safety and security assistants are what we need? Could we do with fewer and strategically place those where the need is truly critical? And use the other money in those schools to reduce class size, whether it's to have teachers team? We've acknowledged the fact that paraprofessionals are hard to find. But to have two prudential teachers in a classroom of thirty kids, you know, teaming? Those are the thoughts that I'm having and the pull, you know, that I'm having when there's not enough money to do justice to both. You know, what's the priority?
And I will bring back an extremely unpopular topic in COVID. And I remember when we were told that we had to mask and distance and all that stuff as part of a tiered approach, you know? Not that I think that that worked. Everyone knows my opinions on that. But I do think that by adding the school's safety assistance, I do think that that is part of, what I hope will become part of our tiered approach. You know, while we're sitting here trying to work things out, I do think it is a good start. I don't know if it's the right answer. I don't know that anyone knows. But at the very least, we know that we need to do something. So this seems like it was kind of the low-hanging fruit, as far as what I can tell from Dr. Savine, that at the very least, we're making a start in trying to make sure that our schools are safe. Because, you know, there's so much more to school safety than just worrying about, you know, making national news because of a tragedy. There's, you know, regular, everyday stuff that so many people don't know about. And, you know, I think, I'm also going to say something unpopular, so I apologize. But, you know, we talk about the larger class sizes as being part of the problem. I also worry about larger schools as being part of the problem. And I know we've kind of talked about it with some of our facilities about closing two schools down to combine them into one, which I certainly understand that. But I also worry that by putting so many kids in one place, we do set ourselves up for a little bit of failure as well. So I don't know exactly where I stand on that, but that is a concern of mine. And, you know, again, from a cost standpoint, it absolutely makes sense to maintain one school rather than two. But, you know, again, like you're saying, I don't think that we can put a price tag on school safety. And, you know, we have a lot of tough decisions to make that we're not going to make today or tomorrow or next year. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we do need to talk about.
And one other thing, I noticed at Fountaindale, one of the kindergarten teachers said to me, she said, not all these children have been to pre-K. I was kind of surprised. I said, oh, really? She goes, yes. So they were doing a writing exercise, I'll call it. And as I walked around the room and watched the children with this writing exercise, I could almost tell, I think, who'd been to pre-K and who had not. The children, I thought, who had been to pre-K were writing a much more coherent sentence than it looked like the children who perhaps had not been to pre-K. And I walked over to the teacher. She was helping someone. And as I walked over, before I could say anything, she said, just out of the blue, she said, I guess you can tell who's been to pre-K and who's not. And I said, well, I can guess, perhaps. And she just smiled and so forth. On another note, I noticed there were two-point-two-four million dollars of adjustments. Were these complete eliminations? Or were these just moved from program to program? And if so, could you tell for the people listening what we did cut, if anything?
So as you know, we meet annually in the fall with every department head, the superintendent, the finance team, and of course, the appropriate assistant supervisor. We go through each page of the budget, line item by line item. The vast majority of the savings that comes in this territory starts with adjusting salaries to the incumbents. So of course, every year, you know, a more senior staff member leaves the system, a more inexperienced staff member comes on. That generally nets what we affectionately call turnover credit. So we take that turnover credit in the budget. So specifically, on page three of the budget summary, and it is line twenty-six, is that turnover credit, where Mr. Sisler analyzes the budget to where we are with our incumbents and adjusts salaries all the way across the system. That was one point four million dollars. We also occasionally will look at what's the mix of our usage within our health insurance plan? So have we had a more of a move from our in-network-only plan to an in-network and out-of-network plan, which is more costly or vice versa? Are more of our members taking family plan? Or are they taking single or spouse-only plan? And that affects, of course, not only the part that the employee pays, but also the share that the board pays. And in this year, and this is line twenty-eight, just beneath what you just looked at, we had a half-million-dollar savings in subscriber mix. So we do do those annual look-ats to make sure that we're bringing the budget to you as tight as we can as opposed to leaving those dollars in the budget, essentially leaving the budget fat, knowing that there's money there. We try to bring it to you and reallocate those funds in the best way we can annually as we bring the budget forward to the board.
And I'll just add to Mr. Prue's conversation. It's part of our challenge when we work with our senior leadership team members and various directors and principals. When you look at positions and personnel, there were some cases where maybe an additional staff member may be the desire. But looking at funds as well as the ability to attract and have confidence that we can secure the right personnel for those selected positions, that was a part of the conversation as well. In some cases, we wanted to catch that balance of, okay, this is the number of behavior analysts that we feel like, which is a hard-to-fill position. This is the number that we believe that we can attract and secure in our system and benefit, recognizing that we may want more and need more. But being able to attract and secure is a part of that challenge. I believe, I think Mr. Sisler was, I was picking up on a desire to speak. If not, I know we have other team members that may want to add regarding that conversation that occurred in early fall with many of our direct reports, directors, and principals.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, it's really listening to your conversation. It's a great conversation, and you're asking all the right questions and having much similar engagement as we have had when we talk to schools about what their needs are. We've listened carefully, and we've thought strategically about what we think we can fill. To the point of, you know, you've ran the gamut of our school issues. You've left out middle school a little bit, so I'm waiting for you to zero in on them. But in our early, in our elementary schools, our concerns around social, emotional support, behavior support for our elementary students, particularly our youngest learners with self-regulation and some of the mental health challenges that we're seeing, a lot of what we've thought about is some of the things we're going to talk about in programming support and with those behavioral, board-certified behavioral analysts and how we can deploy those strategically throughout all of our elementary schools to ensure that schools have access to the support they need to get to their students. The needs change as students get older. So when we talk about class size and we talk about supports, when we get to secondary, what the needs we're seeing are really around school climate. And those security assistants that you saw are really the first, and to Mr. Evans's point, the layer of support that we need for that positive and healthy climate and culture in our secondary schools, particularly in the Hagerstown city area, that the support that we have with individuals who can build relationships with students, who can prevent things, I think you said it well, with their, we can avoid a lot of things that become big and disruptive in a high school if we have staff who have good relationships with kids. And we can avoid even getting to the point of involving law enforcement or down the road. We can have that early intervention to support our students in their decision-making and as they struggle with the things that normal teenagers struggle with. And so I think the budget does represent where we thought we couldn't fill. These are positions that, and Dr. Savine will ask us, if we ask for this, can we find them? You know, to Dr. Zentmeyer's point, we have a labor issue in terms of finding individuals. And so we've thought carefully about those positions that we really do think we can find to support schools.
And I'll just add, part of our conversations is, you know, we tried to make sure that we were addressing all of our most critical areas and also representative. You see all the positions, whether it's transportation or maybe it's a payroll or perhaps an HR investigator. All those positions support the needs of the schools. And arguably, in most of the cases, what was requested was more than what you see. And part of that discussion was making sure that we're appropriately covering the varied areas of need and with a level of confidence that we can fill those positions and build capacity. Some of those positions, I think, are instrumental in terms of not only supporting our students, but also our employees district-wide. So, but my point is, in terms of some of the cuts that are not represented here, there were discussions regarding greater needs in terms of personnel that's not in this budget. But I believe what you have before you is a step forward regarding an attempt to address the specific needs at the element. the specific needs at the elementary level, and also, as Dr. Webster just referenced, the needs and the supports change a bit when it gets into middle school and high school. So this budget, I believe, represents an effort to address those needs in a very proactive manner.
My question is one of a mound here. We have a budget that's three-hundred-and-forty-seven million, one-hundred-and-forty-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. How much more in county funds are we asking above what we received last year? Do we have that number?
I believe that's seven-point-nine-five, which is less than...
Seven-point-nine-five.
Seven-point-nine-five.
And that amounts to, yeah, about seven-point-two-nine percent.
How much percent?
Seven-point-two-nine percent increase.
So just a point of reference, that is below the average inflationary mark, so just a point of reference for the board.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Well? As Mr. Prue mentioned, there is an agenda item on this evening's business meeting. The board has the opportunity to adopt the superintendent's draft budget as its own, so that's coming up this evening. If there's nothing further, Dr. Savine, you have anything additional for us?
Just President Williams, I, along with staff, really appreciate the thoughtfulness and questions of this board and the meaningful discussion. What just occurred here has replicated many of the discussions that we've had as a team, so I really appreciate the efforts and the support of this board regarding the budget process.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Dr. Savine. Thank you, colleagues. We'll move into closed session.